We're in the City Council. Today is December 4th, 2018. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Jim Bullock.
Let's pray. Lord, together here this evening, we're mindful of the holiday season that is upon us. Father, we would like to give thanks for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon our city this past year. Father, we're so very thankful for the prosperity of our economy and the ability to fund and provide the many services that we engage in on a daily basis. As Christmas approaches, Father, please help us be mindful of the season and its purpose. It's not the presence of the events that are so important, but the one gift that is above all. Please be with those less fortunate and provide someone in their life to assist them with the needs that they may have. Father, we ask that you continue to bless our city, our staff, and this council, that we may be a resource for those that need the services we provide. And we ask that you give us knowledge and wisdom from above, that your will be done. In your name we pray. Amen.
This time we recognize our City Clerk, Renee Ward.
The Mayor of Council has no responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning the citizens of Burlington.
Before council, our minutes from November 5th, 2018, work session, and the November 6th City Council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
No move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes have been approved. There are two add-ons to our consent agenda this evening. Item N, to set a date of public hearing for the tobacco-free ordinance. And item O, North Carolina Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition Membership. Do I hear a motion to approve these add-on items?
Next motion to approve the add-ons is presented. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The add-ons have been approved. Before council, is the agenda with the add-ons? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move we adopt the agenda with the add-ons.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Agenda has been adopted. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to approve the 2018 North Carolina State Firemen's Association Annual Roster Certification pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 58-86-25. Item B, to adopt ordinances requiring the demolition of buildings on properties located at 419 Green Street, 414 New Street, and 414 Peel Street. Item C, to temporarily close the following streets at specified times on Friday, December 14th, 2018, for B-Town Events Holiday Magic at Dickens Christmas to be held in downtown Burlington. The details of those closures are spelled out in your agenda. Item D, to approve designation of applicants, agent resolution for the state of North Carolina and FEMA designating the primary agent as Senior Accountant Brad Bullis and the second agent as Operations and Project Engineer Eric Hilton for the city of Burlington. Item E, to approve change order number one to the Willowbrook Park Stream Restoration Contract in the amount of $6,000 and an extension of 182 days to the contract. Item F, to grant Duke Energy an easement at 221 Stone Corry Road to service the transformer and supply power to the Animal Services Facility. Item G, to set a date of public hearing for January 15th, 2019, for citizens to comment on the amendment to the scope of work for the North Park Phase 1C in the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan. Item H, to approve Budget Amendment 2019-20 to allow Burlington Police Department to use stipends received by United Way of Almetts County for future leadership conferences. Item I, to approve Budget Amendment 2019-21 to allow Burlington Police Department to receive donations to the Melvin Hall Fund. Item J, to approve municipal agreements between the city of Burlington and the North Carolina Department of Transportation for projects EB 5882 and EB 5885, and amend the transportation sidewalks and intersection improvements, capital project ordinance, budget amendment 2019-22, to increase revenues from NCO DOT to fund the project. Item K, to approve Budget Amendment 2019-23 to allow Burlington Police Department to use 2018-2019 human trafficking grant funds for staffing, equipment, and training. Item L, to approve Budget Amendment 2019-24 to allow Burlington Police Department to use funds from RICO appropriations for NC4 Street Smart Software and other RICO-fund compliant equipment. Item M, to approve Budget Amendment 2019-25 to allow Burlington Police Department to purchase two 2014 Chevy Caprice Patrol Vehicles. And our add-on of agenda items, item N, to set a date of public hearing for January 15th, 2019, to consider adopting an amendment to the city's smoking ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 2, smoking and pollution control. Item O, to authorize membership to the North Carolina Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition effective January 1st, 2019. Do I hear a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
No moves.
Take one of those as a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. We have one item of unfinished business this evening. Item 1, public hearing has been continued to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for the 1198 Colony Avenue voluntary contiguous annexation of the entire parcel. This is continued from November 6th, 2018, City Council meeting. At this time, we recognize Todd Lambert, City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you actually have before you three public hearings, all in regards to the same parcel. They were advertised individually, as the owner submitted three different annexation agreements and petitions, as they were included in your packet. It's staff recommendation that you hold all three public hearings before taking action on individual requests. And once the public hearings are concluded, council would act on each item individually. So that would be the unfinished business item 1, and then the public hearings, item 2 and 3. So this is the overall area of 1198 Colony Avenue. The unfinished business item was for the petition for the entire 24-acre tract of land. This is the original petition submitted by Mr. Crenshaw, the owner. The request was to facilitate city sewer service to the proposed single-family residence on the parcel. So that petition would look like the entire parcel, as you see before you. Item 2 on the agenda is a subsequent request. Based on further conversations with staff and Mr. Crenshaw, Mr. Crenshaw submitted two additional requests for consideration of annexation for different sections of the parcel. This request and individual action does not create a subdivision of the parcel, so it's a little confusing in that aspect. It only creates a potential line of annexation agreement. It would still be one single tax parcel. We have other parcels in the city that are also in this similar situation, where part of the parcel is in the city and part of the parcel is out, although historically that was done when you annexed, say, 400 feet from the center line of the road, independent of where a property line may be. So in that aspect, it's not unlike other places in the city. Third item that Mr. Crenshaw requested is the annexation of the remainder, which is 8.21 acres of the property. Although he's submitted an annexation request and petition for this piece, this is the parcel, portion of the parcel, that Mr. Crenshaw would like the council to respectfully not annex at this time, to allow for agricultural use of the property. There is agricultural use in the surrounding vicinity, so it's compatible with that aspect. Should council consider the request of Mr. Crenshaw to be the appropriate action, then you would just take individual actions on each item, since we do have three independent petitions. So in that aspect, each petition should be considered separately. The parcel is contiguous and would allow for the current satellite annexation of Ethan Point to become contiguous. If this site was a typical quarter-acre residential site, you wouldn't have all these different options before you. But this parcel is not our common residential single-family lot, in so much that it's 24 acres. City staff has worked with the owner to derive and provide the maps that you have in your packet for these different options, in hopes to facilitate what he hopes to use the property actually for. So the overall look of the property per the request and the additional request, you see the item, the 16-acre tract would be the item in green that would become city corporate limits. The eight acres shown in red would remain outside the city, and it would be contiguous with the other areas in the parcels and the surrounding parcels that are outside the city and currently used as agriculture. We've spoke to the School of Government, confirmed that council could take actions on each petition as it was submitted. The petitions are, they've been reviewed, and they are legal and complete. Should you choose not to annex the eight acres now, we do have a valid petition and annexation agreement. Council could take further action on that request for the period of 21 years that's written into the agreement and runs with the parcel. I know that's quick and jumping all through, but I'm certainly entertained any questions that you have to each individual request. Mr. Joe Kahlo is here representing the applicant. If you have any requests of the applicant as well.
Any council questions? Mr. Kahlo, would you like to add anything?
Not other than to just say that I wanted to thank the staff for working with us to try to figure out something that would work.
Okay. All right. As Mr. Lambert mentioned, item 1 in the unfinished business and item 2 and 3 under public hearings are all related, and so we'll hold all three public hearings together. So if folks would like to speak on any of those three items, again, all related to these 24-plus acres, you can speak all in one session. We'll be holding three individual public hearings, for sake of confusion. So if anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding these three agenda Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding these three agenda items? Do I hear a motion to close public hearings on these three agenda items?
So move.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Public hearings have been closed on items 1, 2, and 3. Any council questions or clarifications regarding this presentation? Or do I hear a motion regarding item 1 under unfinished business? So again, item 1 is the full 24.795-acre parcel. Again, the request was to, this was the original request, and then the new request, items 2 and 3.
I move we decline the annexation for the entire 24.795 acres known as 1198 Colony Avenue, as per the voluntary annexation petition submitted by the owner.
Do I hear a second to that?
I second that.
Any questions regarding the motion to decline the full 24.795-acre annexation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed. Do I hear a motion regarding item 2, the 16.59-acre portion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we move forward the annexation of the 16.59-acre tract, being a portion of the 24.75-acre tract. And I move that we provide, what we provide sewer service per the annexation agreement and adopt the annexation ordinance for the 16.59 acres being shown as tract 1 and as being a portion of the property located 1198 Colony Avenue, as per voluntary annexation petition submitted by the owner.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to annex the 16.59-acre portion, also providing water and sewer to that tract?
Sewer, sir.
Sorry.
Sewer, sir.
They've only requested sewer service.
Thank you for that clarification. Again, any other questions regarding the motion put forward? All those in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed. Do I hear a motion regarding item 3, regarding the 8.21-acre portion requested not to be
I, I move we provide sewer service per the annexation agreement, but decline to consider the annexation of the property as per the voluntary annexation petition for the 8.21 acres being shown as tract 2, being a portion of the property located 1198 Colony Avenue, as per the voluntary annexation petition submitted by the owner at this time. We reserve the right to consider the petition for future terms of an annexation agreement.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to decline annexation at this time, but to continue, but to also provide sewer service? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed. Thank you very much. That moves us to item 4. Thank you, Mr. Kahlo. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
This moves us to item 4. Public hearing has been set to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for Anthony Road voluntary contiguous annexation. At this time, we recognize Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, David Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have an annexation request, and this is a city-owned property, so the annexation process actually began with a resolution. And this resolution was passed at the November 6th, 2018, City Council meeting. The property consists of approximately 132.01 acres. It is contiguous to the current city limits, and there are no anticipated costs with bringing this property into the city limits. This is an advertised public hearing, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions from council regarding this parcel property? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding item 4 in our public hearings, on this side of the room? Anyone from this side?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Any questions regarding this item, or do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the annexation as requested.
Second. Any questions regarding the motion to approve annexation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed. Item 5 on our agenda, public hearing has been set to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for 1722 Shamrock Drive voluntary contiguous annexation. This time, we again recognize Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, David Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The city has received a petition for voluntary annexation. That petition has been certified for sufficiency. This property consists of approximately 112.72 acres. It is contiguous to current city limits, and the request is part of a previously approved conditional rezoning requirement. There are no anticipated costs associated with bringing this property into the city limits, other than a one-time payment of $1,258.16 to the EM Holt Fire District. This is an advertised public hearing. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions from council regarding this parcel? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding item 5 on our agenda? Welcome. If you could state your name and address for the public record.
My name is Jim Johnson, and my address is 1837 Shamrock Drive and the adjacent vacant lot. I've been a resident of Shamrock Golf Club community for the last 25 years. I'd like to greet you and the other council members, and I apologize for that. I'd like to make the point that the very beginning is that the annexation petition, as it has been, as it is presented in this package, is defective. It's incomplete. The property to be annexed includes, in large part, the area known on, shown on the plat of Shamrock Estates and 18 Hole Golf Course, recorded in Almetts Plat Book 9 at pages 27 and 27 and a half, which for over five decades has been used as a golf course and common area refers to Shamrock Golf Course. Under North Carolina General Statute 160A-31, a requirement for your approval of a voluntary annexation petition is that the petition be signed by, quote, "all the owners of the real property described in the application," unquote. This means that all landowners of the land subject to annexation must sign the petition for it to be complete. Under the North Carolina General Statutes, a landowner means any owner of any legal or equitable interest in real property. The owners of residential lots surrounding and contiguous with the Shamrock Golf Course, remember, believe that, they have a significant easement and other vested covenants of enjoyment with respect to the use of the roads, golf course, and other amenities shown on the plat, the previously stated plat, and that such constitute an equitable interest in the property, and two, that such equitable interest rise to the level of making them an owner within the requirements of North Carolina General Statute 160A-31. I am a resident, as previously stated, and lot owner, and I do not request or consent to the proposed annexation. We request that you deny the pending voluntary annexation petition, since it is not signed by all required owners.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Would anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this agenda
Hey, welcome. Thank you. My name is Michael Duggins. I live at 1643 Shamrock Drive. The annex petition you are considering this evening is based on the property being contiguous to the city of Burlington. However, as you can see on the plat, this property that consists of approximately 100 or so acres has a perimeter distance of about 12,436 feet. Only approximately 1,749 feet borders the existing city limits, or only about 14% of that. The portion which borders the city limits is basically a shoestring attachment. There is no public access directly from the city into the area that will be annexed. So that means that all traffic from the city, police, fire, meter readers, trash pickup, will all have to travel from the city through the county to enter the portion of the proposed annexation. No portion of the area to be annexed is contiguous to the city limits by means of road or any other public passage. So the majority of the property is not contiguous. The property is primarily surrounded by residential lots, which, from my knowledge, are not asking to be annexed into the city, and none are in favor of being annexed into the city, because they love where they live. The property, well, the result of the proposed annex to create basically a donut with a hole in it, the donut will be the Almetts County, while the hole is the city. There will be significant risk to the health and safety of the residents in portions of the new city property and the residents of the existing county property. If a house is built in the shoestring area of the city, should it catch fire, it may be difficult to know what fire department's coming. If there's a police emergency, who's responding to that call? And if the flames from a burning house blow from a house in the city to adjoining house in the county, would there be a delay in handling the matter? I think these are all issues that should be considered when determining whether or not to annex this into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duggins. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Welcome.
My name is Marvin Baker. I live at 1849 Shamrock Drive. Mayor, board members, and staff. Renee, I appreciate your commitment to the public. You have been extremely efficient in your job. Mayor, board members, staff, thank you for allowing me to express my concern and my thoughts at this public meeting. As a resident of Shamrock Estates, I have lived there for over 45 years. I've been a property owner for 54 years. It's been a wonderful place to live up until this last year. I have really been up against it, I mean, in all due respects. The board members and mayors will cast a vote, which is very important tonight, that is mainly for the developer. He will definitely need annexation. This is an important vote, also for Shamrock Estates. Believe me, every day, people is asking me, "We are on your side." It must be a ratio at least 100 to 1. I mean, thousands of people has come up and asked me questions about what's going on. I question the board members, and I question the city. Why is it that they are asking now for annexation? Whenever we have a declaratory judgment pending in the Supreme Court, they have not made a ruling, but still, it's important that you annex this in for this development Way I look at it, the developer and the city is trying to kick a field goal before they score. Is that right or wrong? I totally disagree with this annexation, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak?
My name is Lori Mills. I live at 151 Monroe Holt Road. The property description is defective. The description in the annexation petition identified the point of beginning to be the southwest corner of the property owned by and conveyed to William Boyd Mills by deed recording, recorded in Book 381 at page 885 of the Almetts County Register. The deed in Book 381, page 885, references H.W. Faulkner and wife Mary Lou Janet Faulkner as grantors to Lynn L. E. Jordan and wife Peggy C. Jordan as grantees. Such deed does not show title be held by William Boyd Mills. And this is just one of several errors within the developer's annexation petition. And accordingly, the property description is defective, and I believe that the petition should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mills. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, attorneys, and the staff. My name is John Harris. I reside at 1601 Shamrock Drive, and vehemently oppose the annexation of the 1722 property that's being proposed to be annexed into the city limits. This annexation request is being brought to you by the developer, and this individual has threatened me and my neighbors with mental and financial ruling, as opposed, and also with other statements made. If we don't cease doing what we're doing, which standing up for our rights, as you've seen before you tonight, there'll be other threats forthcoming, and other things that we will do to you to make it, put you in harm's way. I just do not feel like this is appropriate for any individual to come in and threaten and put the city through this, and also the county residents. We're not city residents, but we are state of North Carolina residents. We are Almetts County residents, and we're under the city ETJ. Many of these Shamrock residents, they are senior citizens. They're retired, and to me and to them, this constitutes a mental harassment, and I'm surprised somebody has not come forth with that as of yet. I do believe this developer is not a caring individual, as first stated at the church meeting that we had back in March, and that he wanted this to be a good project for all, because this project has not, and will not be, a good project for the 85 lots that's platted out by the deeds. And within our own deeds and our deeds state on the contiguous property... And within our own deeds and how our deeds state on the contiguous property, I would like to request that this annexation by minimum be denied until further court rulings have been held. One other issue I would like to address is the funding source, which seems to be inadequate. On page one of the work session agenda request packet by the city states the following: Funding source: General Fund. At the time of the September 18 council meeting, the board members stated that there would not be general funding available in the event the homeowners around the contiguous property proposed for the annexation, and the event those homeowners requested voluntary annexation. Accordingly, it's difficult to understand how the city has funds for sufficient water and sewer for the 223 proposed homes, but not for, there will be in the annexed area, but not for the 40 homes which are currently in the contiguous area that's to be annexed. I appreciate your time, and I ask you to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak?
Mayor, my name is Mary Hayes, and I live on the Monroe Holt Road. My question is, when you annex, if you annex the golf course, we're facing Monroe Holt Road backing up to that. Will we be annexed in, or what happens? See, that's what I want to know, how we will fare.
And the simple answer is the annexation request is purely for the property lines as defined. So voluntary annexation requires that property owner to request the annexation.
So we won't be?
Unless you specifically request it.
Thank you for your time.
So thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak?
Just very quickly, mayor and member of council, my name is Ryan Moffett. I represent the applicant in this matter. I'm with the Vernon Law Firm here in Burlington across the street at 522 South Lexington Avenue. I don't have a whole lot to add except to confirm that Hinson Realty, my client, the applicant, does in fact own the property. He has title insurance. The property description submitted with the annexation petition is accurate. Again, it's insured, and that this request, or this petition has been submitted pursuant to a condition of the approved rezoning. If you all have any questions based on comments that have been made or anything in that petition, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, appreciate your consideration of this petition, this request. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Remove. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Any questions from council regarding this, or do I hear a motion? Do you have some questions, Barry?
I didn't really understand the question that John Harris raised about funds from the general fund.
So if I could ask that to staff, I think that was regarding water sewer connections. There's a policy by the city that that connection from the main line to the individual residence is funded by the individual property owner. And so in this case, the developer is paying those funds to the connections to their individual lots and making the general connection right.
If I can, just for the applicant's part, the applicant's paying to have the water and sewer run from the main line to his development. And then for that part, you know, he's on that as far as his grounds.
But he's paying for all that physical infrastructure. There is a general fund burden or enterprise fund burden, didn't see it.
Mr. Mayor, council, if I may add, that the general fund reference there was actually for the fire payment DM hold for that $1,258.16.
$1,258.16.
Okay.
From a contiguous standpoint, we're fine.
Can you comment any? There was a question about errors in the petition, I think as far as deed references.
Correct, Commissioner Moffett can address that. I think you did when you said there was title insurance.
Yeah, no, this property description is the description that the applicant took title on the basis of that we searched title, certified title, and obtained insurance on it. So to that extent, it's sort of correct description, and it depicts what the applicant's requesting to be annexed.
I'd like to, Mayor, to let the city attorney, does under the annexation section, does it recognize equitable interest as opposed to legal? Or is it just, I mean, it's just, the question is, want to have a legal interest, not equitable? Is that correct?
It's legal. It's legal title, not equitable title here, and that's what the title insurance company is basically saying, when Mr. Moffett says they have title insurance coverage. If there were any equitable interest holders, the title insurance company would be involved at that point.
Mr. Johnson raised his statement about the equitable interest, and I just want to clarify that, you know, the annexation act does not, it just recognizes legal, that's versus equity.
Any other council questions regarding this item? Do I hear a motion regarding Agenda Item 5?
I'll make a motion that we approve the annexation, that's requested.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, motion is passed. Appreciate everyone's comments. Thank you all for being here. I do want to, let's see, we'll move to Item 6. All right, Item 6 on our agenda, City Council will consider approving the proposed 2019 fees and changes scheduled to be effective January 1st, 2019. At this time, we recognize Finance and Risk Management Director, Peggy Reese.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. You have in your agenda packet the recommended changes, additions, or deletions to the proposed fees, and myself and the respective department heads of those changes are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? I know Councilmember Ward raised a couple of clarifications last night. Any additions to that?
We cleared up my question.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the request effective January 1st, 2019, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Item 7 on our agenda, City Council will consider an amendment, amended interlocal agreement for the merged Alamance Municipal Alcohol Beverage Control Systems. At this time, we recognize City Attorney David Huff.
Council, Mayor, you notice that the caption of this is the third amended and first reinstatement of the interlocal agreement for the merged Alamance Municipal Alcohol Beverage Control Systems. What that basically tries to reflect is this was initially passed by Burlington Graham back in 1961. This is the third amendment to the governing interlocal agreement between, it recognizes the fact that you also had had the Bevan join the system, and now Swept and Deal have voted, but in fact, nothing has ever been built by way of an ABC school layer. So what we're trying to do is basically bring our documents, our documents and governing documents up to reflect what's currently happening and has been happening since 2012, and that is that the five-member board, two from Burlington, two from Graham, and one from Bevan, and the board actually elects its own chairman. The most important part of that, I think, is that nothing is being changed regarding the distribution of the net profits each and every year. That continues to be the same as it really basically was back in 1961.
So the language in there that was italicized, that's been repealed, or that is still?
That pertaining to the 15%. Which part was written in this?
15% is to local police, but it's not the library and the hospital and all the other things.
No, that's the center.
Any other questions you're cutting regarding this request?
Just a point of clarification. I'm sure everybody's aware of this was originally established by a special act of the General Assembly, but subsequent to that, the general statute was adopted to allow governmental units to enter into interlocal agreements, and it's my understanding, you correct me, David, it's not necessary for a special act to amend this. We can use an interlocal agreement statute.
That's right. And under North Carolina general statute 18B now, local governments can, you know, enter into these agreements upon themselves, and all it has to do is go to the ABC Commission for them to approve it.
Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Remove.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the amended agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We have no public comments signed up tonight. Do I hear any city council comments? Actually, before we get to that, I do want to recognize, I understand you have some leadership Alamance votes here. Is that you all in the back? Do you all want to introduce yourselves?
I'm on the hook with Alamance Chiefs.
Awesome.
Kelly Hall, Lake United Way.
Erin Drunkel.
Alice DeGob, Alamance County.
Leah Clark, Scotty Boyce Services.
From what I hear, the best class ever. Anne.
Yeah.
I thought they had to sing the album out of their university.
We're not that cool. That's the momentum.
They always say the best class ever, but I can always say the oldest class.
I think we've got, we've got three members up. How many of ours are alumni?
1991. Beat that.
Oh, wow.
I was part of that because I was one of the instructors.
I was still in college.
We appreciate you all choosing us as your local government.
They used to do it as a middle school program.
Oh.
We appreciate you being here. Do I hear any council comments or announcements, Matt?
Mayor, I have one comment. We were fortunate enough, Impact Alamance had Mark Fitton in last week, and several of us were there last Wednesday, elected officials from across the county, other cities and county officials, and just various folks talking about public activity, especially regarding more walking, more bicycling, more public transit, things like that. And I really appreciate his common sense approach to whether you agree or disagree with how funding should be. It was a very practical and common sense approach to the subject that we all need to get a little more exercise, and I think everybody probably agreed to that. But, you know, if you sit there and listen to this, what do we do now? We leave and walk out after seeing a pretty enlightening program, and there's a lot of low hanging fruit that we could certainly be working on, and staff may tell us, we're already ahead of you, Jim, we're way ahead of you. But just as simple as a few months ago, we had a resident from North Main Street that talked about changing the structure of the road there so you could walk, you could bicycle. And that is exactly what Mark discussed, items like that in his presentation. So I think we should look at some of these areas and, you know, figure it out. It's just as simple as maybe getting engaged and not spending a ton of money, but being a little creative. He was very creative. I've never seen him around to bat with hay veils to that program. But I certainly think the information that he provided is worth us taking some action upon to see if it matters to the community, as I believe it would.
Any other comments?
I saw him earlier. Did you? I saw him a few months ago and wasn't able to make this one, but I agree with you. It just was things you didn't think about before, and it's so easy that we could do some things to get people walking more and make it easier.
Not only walking, but walking safer with the intersections along some wide streets, some simple stuff like striping or some pretty unique, the intersection showed about using the Z or Y where people could see cars coming and cars could see pedestrians crossing, you know, makes a lot of sense.
Well, to look at the overall benefits of reducing your need to build parking or improving community health, and as a council, it's adopted a health and all policies strategy to look at and say, if we can encourage this, then we can reduce healthcare costs, not just in our employees, but all of our citizens, and improve our overall community. Wonderful presentation. It's also encouraging to see members, elected leaders, and staff members, and community members from all around the county. It's something that can benefit everyone in Alamance County. Other council comments? Wanted to make a couple announcements. For those of you working on your Christmas list, Santa's mailbox is up at the Police Department. Folks can drop off their letters, chief, until what date?
I honestly don't know.
It's coming up. Get them in soon.
Yeah.
I'm Santa's a busy man. We appreciate that service for our community. In addition to holiday events, Holiday Magic is coming up, as you may have familiar in the agenda, December 14th in downtown. It's always a wonderful event. Rain, shine, snow, cold, warm, whatever it is, it's a great event to get downtown and have fun for the whole family. And speaking of cold, I do want to mention a program that's free from Duke Energy called their House Call Program. If you find yourself in a chillier house than you expected, they offer this free to all customers in the city and across the state, and it's an opportunity for them to come and do a home energy audit in your home. They'll actually provide you with some energy-saving products and recommendations for how you can save on your energy bill, which we all want to cut our energy bill, especially through the winter. So check that out. The website is duke-energy.com/dingdong, and the phone number is 844-DINGDONG. So very memorable. Also, regarding our Police Department, their final strategic planning session is coming up this Thursday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. over at Blessed Satiman Church. And then lastly, we're celebrating the 90th anniversary of Paramount Theater this year, and on December 19th will be A Life of a Theater at 8:00 p.m. down at Paramount Theater. You can get your tickets. Looking forward to the performance. It's a collection of historical performances from the Paramount history. So hope you get a chance to check that out.
Don't you have something to park that weekend?
What?
In the park.
The event in the park. We have Christians in the park, December 22nd. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.